Good morning. Welcome to our county commission meeting for September 10th, 2024. I'm going to call our meeting to order and note for the record that we do have a quorum of commissioners present. Present Commissioner Bender is not in attendance today. I just silenced my cellphone, so remind everybody else to do that. And Kim, do we need people to sign in if they're going to speak? Okay, yes, so we can still doing that, okay. I ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on an item in the consent agenda? Any commissioner like to remove anything from the consent agenda? For a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. All those, oh, call the roll, please.
Kipli?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to regular business, we have our fiscal year 2025 final budget briefing. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beeman with the auditor's office. We have been talking budget for about three months now, so we're getting into the home stretch. So just wanted to have our final budget briefing today as we did have a few changes from last week's meeting related to centrally assessed utility values and growth adjustments. So we'll just run through those changes today and kind of show you where things are at, what we'll bring back next week for final budget adoption. So as we go through this, I just want to present the timeline again. So this is where we've been throughout the year. We're finally down here at the bottom right for final budget briefing with the final budget adoption will be at our September 24th meeting. So with this next slide, the next few slides will identify the changes from provisional budget to final budget. The ones that we discussed last week are on here. The only items that have changed are related to generally tax, the tax revenue growth and CPI for utility adjustments. So this line under revenue for all the slides, and then there was a slight change for the FIRE funds. So we've had revenue adjustments for general fund, building fund, library fund, and FIRE fund, and then a slight change in expenditure appropriations under the FIRE fund. So I'll just pause there to see if you have any questions before we move forward.
Any questions?
Okay. Related to the means of finance, the changes that I just presented are incorporated in this. This will be similar to what you'll see next week. Next week's will be a slightly different format, just that that's the required format for the state, but the presentation is, and the numbers are aligned. So this is the means of finance. And then as we get through this, I just wanted to recap the tax levies now that we have the data with the utility adjustments in. So the general fund, building fund and bond fund levies, the levies related to county services, the levies themselves are a total of 2.970 for 2025. As you can see, that is about a 2% decline from 2024 through to 2025. And usually the question is how does that translate into what that means for a taxpayer? So that's what you'll see on this next slide here. This is the revenue that is on the means of finance. This is the preliminary abstract values. You'll note that I'm still saying preliminary abstract values. That's because with centrally assessed utility values, they now have to go back to the state after we process them for one final review. So technically, they're still preliminary until they do that review, but we don't anticipate any changes. So this is the 2025 levy for those three funds. The 2024 levy, you can see it's a decrease of .066. And as we've shared before on this slide, 2024, we have a $300,000 home. And then we did a 9.3% increase to that home, which was the average increase of market value. So for a $300,000 home that received the average market value, their increase relating to the tax levy of 2.97 is about a $63 increase for county services. Now, their individual tax bills are obviously going to be more. You're going to have school taxes, municipal or township taxes, et cetera. But these are the three primary funds for county services. So I'll just pause there to see if you have any questions.
Susan, just for clarification, that $300,000 home in '24, the assessment was based on the 327,900, so it's the same house. It's assessed for more.
It's assessed for more. So we did that average increase of 9.3% in that formula just because most people's houses change from year to year. So that's what we're trying to do here is just show if that house went up, the average amount, this is what this is. And now that market change could be higher or lower depending upon areas. This is just one analysis just to give you an idea of an impact.
Mr. Chair, if I could dive into that a little bit more. So we talked about the average valuation increase being 9.3%. So holding all other things equal, we'd see that tax increase of 9.3%, but the levy did come down slightly. So it's something less than 9.3% on average. Coming from the other angle on that, remind me, our growth factor, what we can raise our budget by is the 3% or inflation, whichever is less. So we use 3% this year. And then what was the growth rate?
I believe it was 3.35%. I'll make sure to have that for sure.
So we had about roughly 6% to 6.5% of growth to our budget?
Yeah, it'd be 6.35%.
Okay, so 6.35. So that reconciles fairly well with if someone's seeing a 9.3% increase in the value of their home, but then we ratchet down the levy rate. They're maybe seeing somewhere around, on average, 6% to 7% increase in their taxes. Is that a fair way to look at it, or am I missing a few variables?
It gets a little bit more complicated because you'll have all of your other taxing districts in there, too, so.
Sure, yes, that's a great point. As to the county assessment, or the county.
The county assessment, we saw a 2% decrease in the levy.
Yes, okay.
And just to note, the growth that we talk about in the tax formula is construction growth. Market value changes do not impact the growth percentage, just to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to open it up to public comment. This is a briefing, not an action item. We will, we do not have a commission meeting next week. On the 24th, we will have the final budget action. So this is simply a briefing, but if anybody would like to comment on the presentation today, we welcome your comments. Okay, thank you, Susan. Moving on then, consider a motion to authorize a chair to sign the bridge improvement grant agreement for preliminary engineering for replacement of structure 50242060. Good morning, Steve.
Morning, Commissioner. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. We were successful last month in getting two preliminary engineering grants from the South Dakota Bridge Improvement Grant Program. The first one here is to do preliminary engineering to replace a bridge on our Highway 114 east of Baltic. We're looking for your permission to enter into this agreement where the DOT will pay for 80% of the engineering for this project.
All right, before I go to commission questions, I'll take public comment. Anybody from the public like to address this agenda item? All right, turn it back to the commission for questions, action. Would make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize a chair to sign the bridge improvement grant agreement for preliminary engineering for replacement of structure 5160-199.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is the other bridge we were successful in receiving preliminary engineering funding for. The structure is on La Mesa at Madison. It's right at the edge of Sioux Falls. We are working closely with the city of Sioux Falls on this project. Our bridge engineer is considering posting load restrictions on this bridge in the near future, so we want to get ahead of it. We're looking for your permission to enter into this agreement with the South Dakota DOT to get going on engineering for this bridge replacement.
All right, McGinn, open it for public comment. Anybody like to address this agenda item? Okay, turn it to the commission for questions and action.
Mr. Chair, I'll just make the comment that appreciate the highway superintendent's diligence in securing these big funding opportunities. The 80/20 split really helps out the county, and I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. If I may, Steve, how much big funding will we receive this year? Do you have a final number on that?
With the three bridge replacements we got earlier, it will probably be around $3 million.
$3 million, okay. So it's costing us 240, 250 roughly?
It'd be about 20% of $3 million, so.
Okay, okay.
600.
Okay, good enough, thank you. Call the roll.
Kipli?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize a chair to sign a change order between Minnehaha County and Rungy Enterprises for MC 1710 Highway 149 reconstruction.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is our construction project for the Colton Road. This is phase two of three. We had designed this project and awarded it to Rungy Construction with the plan to do this work this summer while the Tri Valley School was out of session. It was the only time we would allow them to have the road closed. As we all know, we had a lot of rain back in May, June, and early July, which delayed this project. Because of that, they're extending into the fall. They will meet their completion date, but now with school started, they need to use pilot cars and flaggers, which is a good majority of this $60,000 change order. There was also some additional culvert work, and there was one vinyl fence that had to be relocated that was concreted pretty heavily into the ground, which necessitated replacement instead of relocation. This change order represents about 3.6% increase to the total contract. We do have budget available to pay for this increase.
Okay, public comment on this agenda item? My question, Steve, is so the rain delayed the construction, which then for safety reasons, we, with the school there, we needed to add the extra precautions of a pilot car and that type of thing? Is that what drove this change order?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. We required that if they did the work while school is in session, they would have to do it open to traffic. And being they didn't get, weren't able to get the work done because of all the rain, most of the project is occurring this month.
So we didn't miss anything. It was just a function of the weather, and can't blame the contractor for that. So any other questions, comments from commissioners? All right, look for action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the highway department to purchase culverts for $60,000 from Union County's ADS 2024 culvert bid.
And once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. We just completed our culvert inspections for the year. We identified some culverts that need replacement. We have started using a heavy plastic pipe on some of our culverts. Union County has a open bid for the pipe that we need, so we're looking for your permission to purchase some culverts that we can use under the Union County contract.
Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, action?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Call the roll.
Kipli?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize a chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated for Construction Administration of Project MC 2209, Structure 50144020 Rehab.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is the construction administration contract for the bridge on Highway 104 west of Dell Rapids that we let earlier this year. This project will be starting after the first of the year. This standard contract will hire STH to do our contract administration.
All right, public comment on this agenda item? Commission, discussion, and action. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize a chair to sign a proposal from Safe Haven Defense LLC for installation of courthouse interior and exterior windows. Morning, Mark.
Morning, Commissioner. Excuse me, Mark Crin, Fisott's Department. Approval of the motion will authorize the chair to sign a proposal from Safe Haven Defense LLC for the installation of bullet resistant laminate on select windows in the courthouse. Minnehaha County Courthouse Security Committee recommends a purchase after review of five quotes from separate vendors. Approval of the motion also authorizes acceptance and use of UJS Court Security Grant money to fund 75% of the total cost of the project. Are there any questions?
Open it to public comment. Anybody from the public like to address this agenda Commission, action?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize a chair to approve an invoice from Election Systems and Software LLC in the amount of $32,465.97. Good morning, Auditor Anderson.
Good morning. That went very quick this morning. So Leah Anderson, Auditor's Office. My first agenda item today is, yes, an invoice that's above my threshold of $25,000. The invoice is an annual invoice that we pay, but for biannual service and firmware licenses for the, this one is for three of the DS 850s tabulators and 103 Express votes. We also get an additional invoice for this for the other tabulator and EMS laptop. That invoice that is yet to come is about $9,000 annually. We do not have an agreement or a contract for this. It appears that usually the increase is approximately 3.5% per year. So just passing this on for your approval and signature.
All right, public comment on this agenda item? All right, turn it to the commission for questions, action, discussion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Kipli?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Auditors update on the 2020 general election ballot discrepancy. Welcome back.
Yes, Leah Anderson, Auditor's Office. So in, at the June 18th commission meeting and in a press release, I had shared information regarding a discrepancy in, of about 24,500 ballots that were cast in the 2020 general election, but were not accounted for in the audit logs. Quick explanation, the audit logs are the, we have both paper and electronic audit logs that are to be retained from the tabulators. Also, just to clear up, just some misinformation with the media and others, that I had never stated that the ballots were missing. I stated that there was a discrepancy in the ballots cast versus the audit logs. So that led to me wanting to do some, a deeper dive. I'm not going to read the quotes that I put in there, but I put in there that information so that people could see that. I also put the clip again, here, I can scroll down, from my initial, this is the initial summary from the larger spreadsheet that I did when I found this discrepancy. That spreadsheet, I am unable to share with the public because of it being not a public record and proprietary information. So we've gone through that with litigation. So going forward, my plan to, originally I wanted to do an audit of those 2020 ballots to try to determine the exact number. I wasn't able to actually audit the ballots, but after some communication with the state's attorney's office, which took a few weeks, then the advice was really to use restraint, I guess is the best way to put it, in reviewing records. So the ballots, since they're sealed, I could not unseal them without judge's orders, which would require commission action. So instead, I dug through hundreds of boxes in the public safety building and tried to find documents that I could review. So upon doing that, I was able to locate the recap sheets, most of the recap sheets for the ballots cast in person. I was able to locate some of the election day poll lists to verify those totals. I was missing a few of those. And then the absentee records were not well organized, but there were sheets that listed out how many ballots they tabulated. Using all of those items, I put together, I'll go down here to my recap sheet. I put together a recap sheet. It's very difficult to see on here. But this is something similar that I created for the '24 primary, where I went through and reconciled the recap sheets, the poll lists, and then any discrepancies when the ballots were run through, and then comparing that to the results on the website of the Secretary of State. This recap shows that I was able to account for the ballots that were listed on the Secretary of State's website per these documents that I was able to look at with a difference of 283 ballots. I had some other findings going through that, but that's not important to the relation of the ballots, ballot discrepancy. So now that I have completed that reconciliation, I am more comfortable with the number of ballots that were cast. And the reconciliation still does not technically explain why we have the difference with the audit logs and the cast vote records, but that's not something that I can resolve on my own because we don't have all of those records available to make that determination. So most likely, a tabulator was not properly recording the audit log electronically, or it wasn't backed up properly. Any questions?
Before we go to questions, we do take public comment, so I will take public comment on this agenda item. Anybody like to address the commission on this agenda item? All righty, I'll turn it to the commission if they have any questions. Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you for putting this all together for us. And I just wanted to recap, you feel more comfortable now than you did before, right? That was your statement?
More comfortable, yes, with the, looking at the discrepancy, yes. I am going to assume the ballots are all there because we can't open them and look at them. And, but yes, I do feel more comfortable with the number of ballots cast. We did not look at, or I didn't look at results, just the number of ballots.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kipli?
I have a series of somewhat related questions. Auditor Anderson, I'm sure you're familiar with this form, the registration form. We're coming up on the deadline. Do you recall when the voter registration deadline is for this coming election?
Yes, it's October 21st.
Okay, so October 21st. So we're getting close to the 30-day mark there, and I'm sure you're familiar also with the state statute that has a residency requirement for 30 days. So I've just gotten a few inquiries from some constituents that are having trouble registering to vote with your office, and I thought it might be helpful to just go through a series of questions to provide them some clarity. So what does an applicant need to do to satisfy the requirement that they have maintained residency within the state for at least 30 days before submitting this form?
Well, first off, this is off topic, but I would be happy to answer it. The residency requirement, like it says, is 30 days within the state of South Dakota. I do not require proof of that residency. I just need them to be truthful when they sign that form.
So you wouldn't ask for proof of some kind of receipts or some kind of, basically just you would take their attestation on the form that they have either in box three, their residency address, or an explanation in box four A describing their residency in the state?
Correct. We do need, in box three, we do need an address of where they can stay, where they have stayed. It needs to be an address where they can reside. It can't be a mailing address, or a postal mailing address.
Okay. And I'm happy to get back on topic. I'd actually remind the commission and Auditor Anderson that actually how some of this 2020 issues came up in the first place was you going off topic when we were just asking for a briefing on the 2024 recount and post-election audit, and then you threw in what I termed at the time "half-baked" ideas about what was going on in 2020. So, so we'll get back, we'll get on to topic here on what we were seeing in 2020. So I guess when I, I feel completely vindicated in calling that "half-baked" because obviously you took the time and actually looked into it more, and now as my colleague, Commissioner Blainberg, says, you feel more comfortable with that. Do you have any regrets with that press release and some of the media you did in the meantime, when you put out that there were election irregularities of 24,000 votes in Minnehaha County in 2020?
No, because as I stated, Mr. Chair, I will direct this to you because I'm not supposed to direct to a commissioner, but as I stated, I don't have any regrets. The discrepancy was there, and it's still there, and it needed to be addressed. And it's my job as the auditor of this county to look into any discrepancies. We have a very important election coming up in '24, and I need to understand if there are possibilities of ways that our elections can be manipulated. I also need to look at every possibility of previous fraud, if possible, or if it's occurred. I take the responsibility, or I took the responsibility when I became the auditor, of records that were being retained under my watch. And yes, those records had to continue to be retained due to litigation when I began my term. So I needed to understand if those records were properly retained, if they exist, and look at the results of some of that information so that I could understand any possibilities that could affect upcoming elections. So it's my job as the auditor to understand this information thoroughly and to be transparent with it. And that's what I'm trying to do. There was a discrepancy. It's still there, but it's between the cast vote record and the audit log. Those are tools that we use to audit elections and to look at the results. They haven't been used in the past, and that's not my fault. They should be used in the future, and I will continue to use those tools and analyze those tools.
Mr. Chair, one last comment.
Last question, Commissioner.
Just really a comment here, just to wrap up from my perspective. Basically, after this press release went out, the auditor did certain media interviews with online entities that then used that interview to use a headline that said, "Minnehaha County Auditor Doesn't Rule Out CIA Involvement in Election Irregularities." And really, what we have there is just useful idiocy for election conspiracy grifters. So, so that's just my assessment of it. And this election coming up is very important, and we need an auditor with credibility. And at this point, you are the auditor who cried wolf, okay? So you have no credibility, and I, as one commissioner, would ask you to resign. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I respond to that?
You may, you bet.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to resign. Sorry, Mr. Kipli. However, when I was asked the question, if I would rule out anything like that, I can't rule out anything such as any other involvement because I don't know that there's no other involvement. We have a great, huge amount of absentee request forms that come from overseas. We have a great, huge amount of absentee request forms that come from overseas citizens that claim to reside in South Dakota. When they register to vote, they don't have to show any proof of identification. They get to register, they get to request their absentee ballot without any proof of identification. In the 2020 election, there were a great deal, probably 30,000 ballots, that came in, in that process. And, like I said, I did not look at the results of the ballots that were cast, because I couldn't. But I, when I see every day how many requests come through to register and to request an absentee ballot from people that reside outside of the U.S. that are, I'm not talking about military, that is very few and far between in comparison to the thousands of ballot requests that we get from overseas people. They don't even have to prove that they reside overseas. You could be down the street and mark that you are outside of the U.S. and request your ballot by email and not show any identification. So would I rule out any type of fraudulent activity? No, I would not rule that out, because it happens in every election, not just the 2020 election.
Moving on, my questions, auditor, are, what have we learned? I mean, I'm tired of recounting the 2020 election, that was four years ago. What have we learned? Do you talk about the absentee votes, and counting, and records, and that type of thing? What have you, what are you going to change? What have you learned so we can, we don't have these problems?
Yes.
No system is ever perfect, and, I mean, we have to make it work.
Yes, correct. So what I've learned, so one thing I did in the 24 primary was I created that balance sheet spreadsheet, that I recommend having that done. I know for this election, it's gonna be really tough, because our canvas is gonna occur on the Friday after the election. So I'm gonna spend a lot of time here, after hours, making sure that balance sheet is completed. And then when I present the results to the canvassing board, I'm gonna have documentation that supports the numbers that we are canvassing. That was one thing that really alarmed me with, in looking at all, everything with the 2020, was it was about two minutes were taken to canvas that election by the canvassing That's not appropriate. When you canvas the election, you're certifying it, and I think that that certification should be done a little more thoroughly. Even when I provided that documentation to the previous canvas board for the 24 primary, they did not look at any of it. So I'm just gonna encourage our canvassing board, which will be the commissioners this time, to look at all the documentation that I'm gonna provide, and make sure that you're comfortable with the numbers before you sign off and certify that election. It's also very important for me to make sure that the tabulators are thoroughly tested. And I'm not saying just run some test ballots through. Those ballots need to be counted manually and run through the tabulator, so that we can verify that those results are correct. The other thing is doing a more thorough testing of the tabulators. If we only rely on the test ballots that we receive from ESNS, we don't get a very thorough test. And so, just like I did in the 24 primary, I created additional ballots that were hand-marked so that we could test further. Every single candidate and issue on the ballot needs to have a unique number, so that we know that they're being tabulated correctly. So that's also a change that I've made and will continue to use. There, I would say just making sure we retain the proper records, especially the electronic data off of the tabulators, and also the EMS, which is the election management system. We've also upgraded that laptop that we use for the election management system. Unfortunately, with that upgrade of the computer, I was hoping that they would have updated their antivirus software, but they have not done that yet. So we're still operating with a 2019 antivirus on that laptop. So my other goal is to make sure that we only use clean flash drives, clean devices going into that machine, and never go back and forth from the laptop that we report the information to the state on, back to the EMS laptop. We need to keep that process clean.
Okay. Canvassing board will meet on a Friday after the election, because the 11th is obviously Veterans Day, or, yeah, Veterans Day. So you're gonna be really crunched for time, obviously.
Yes.
I recused myself from the last canvassing board, because I was on the ballot. Wouldn't that be appropriate for me to do again?
In my opinion, I think so.
Thank you. I have another question. I should've wrote it down, I forgot what it is. I apologize.
Mr. Chair, I could give you a minute, if I could ask a question?
Maybe I'll come up with it. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Did you, when you were just speaking, did you state that you think the ballots should be counted by the machine and manually for the prime, or for the general election?
The ballots that we test with, for sure, will be counted manually and by the tabulator.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify.
It's, it's referred to as the test deck.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I guess mine, it really isn't a question, but, you know, there's, I don't know if, when you say tens of thousands of ballots come from overseas or ballot requests, do you track this in any way? I mean, this is the first I'd heard of this type of thing. I know we have a lot of military, maybe, maybe 8,000 in the entire state that could be on active duty at this time, and maybe some people that moved back overseas after being in the military. What, I'd like to hear more about this, so, I mean, you're throwing a number out, but I guess I'm skeptical, it just seems like such a large number.
That number was in regards to the 2020 election, and yes, it was a large number. I think the difference in that election were, everybody that was a registered voter was sent an absentee request. So everybody that was on the voter rolls, even if they no longer lived here, they got that request, and I'm sure that drove that number up. In this election currently, we're sitting at about 3,500 absentee requests, but that number grows by approximately, I'd say, 100 a day. So it's really growing rapidly, and as we get closer to the election, it will continue to grow. The, the largest amount of those absentee requests are from our overseas, or people that are residing outside of the U.S. Not, I'm not talking about military. Like I said, those, I would say, if I looked through the files right now, we probably have 100 military. And most of those are not even active duty. Some of those are spouses of active-duty military. So the remaining big portion of those ballots, we have a whole banker's box full of absentee requests from what we now refer to as Precinct 416, which is our Dakota Post address, and we have about a half a banker's box of those that reside at your best address, which is East Eighth Street. Most of those claim to be out of the country.
So we're no longer sending absentee ballots to everybody only by request, which is different from four years ago?
Correct.
Commissioners, any other questions? All right, this was a briefing. I appreciate your time, auditor, thank you.
Thank you.
We now are, have the opportunity for public comment. If you are gonna comment, Kim says we have to sign in, she needs your name for the record. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jean Childs. I live in Sioux Falls, Lincoln County. The 2020 election night, I felt my country going down the rapids toward a thousand-foot waterfall drop. I woke up the next morning wishing the tribulation had lifted me out of this nightmare. I did not want to get out of bed, so I prayed to God for the will to live. He answered my prayer by making me a part of these grassroots efforts to save our republic. For heaven's sakes, I implore you to help us to make our elections transparent and honest. Hand-counted ballots on Election Day at the precinct level, together we can save our constitutional republic. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County. I have stood up here and been criticized, because I called out a commissioner, and I'm supposed to address the whole commission, which hardly any of you are looking at me. But what I would like to say is, I think it is despicable that it is allowed for a commissioner to call out the auditor in a public meeting. And there he goes making faces again. You need to quit watching mainstream media, because every single state has got election fraud going on. There's reports of hundreds of thousands of ballots that have been flown in, shipped in, absentee ballots that are causing these elections to be fraudulent. The same thing is happening. I mean, if it can happen in other states, why can it not happen in South Dakota? And why can it not happen in Minnehaha County? You need to quit watching mainstream media, because it's fake news. And there's a lot of truth out there in regards to how our elections are being stolen. Our auditor is doing the best she can with her hands tied behind her back, and you guys just continue to ridicule her and to ask for her resignation?
Jennifer Foss, Minnehaha County. I'm gonna second that. I think it was despicable how Leah's been treated. I've been here a number of times, and I've seen her ridiculed, and, you know, and to ask for her, her resignation when she's just trying to make sure things balance is really disgusting, and I would like to ask for Commissioner Kipling's resignation, because he cannot
Ellen Wheat, Minnehaha County. And I don't know how many of you were here or paid attention to the last commissioner that, not commissioner, but the auditor, that gave a stellar report about the election. And then in the newspaper, we saw, oh gosh, somebody running an Excel spreadsheet happened to catch the fact that the machine, the, the system was not running right, and they had to go in and correct it. Well, if somebody isn't paying attention, guess what's gonna happen? The same thing's gonna happen. And we've got an auditor here that wants to look into things, and I think it's very important to check it. You wouldn't receive her financial report if she didn't check it and give you all the information. Why should an auditor just give you the gold standard when there's flaws in what was going on? He did not even report to you what the problem was. And that was somebody you selected. The people have selected an auditor that wants to look into things, and I think you need to respect her for that.
Good morning, Rhian Alum, Minnehaha County. The one thing I wanna say is, my big concern is your lack of concern.
Penny Baybridge, Minnehaha County. Being a person that's worked in an office and understands the schematics of how that works, I think it's brilliant that our auditor took a previous election, so she could see what it was and how it works, so that she could apply it to what she's doing. There's nobody coming in and training her to do this. There's nobody in place getting the job done. It was a brilliant move for her to understand how this one works, so she can make sure that this, you know, our current one works as well. So I think that, you know, she deserves credit for that, and congratulations on taking that initiative. I've worked as a poll watcher for the last two years. I poll watch just about every, every election, and the amount of errors and mistakes that are happening at the, at the ground level, it needs to be addressed. And I appreciate the fact that our current auditor is doing everything she can to make sure that everyone is trained properly, and they know what their duties are. Thank you.
All right, anybody else for public comment? Moving on to commission liaison reports. I was checking my phone to see what I did last week. I had a Sioux Metro Growth Alliance event the last Friday, that took most of the day, so I'm fundraiser for that organization. It was my big thing for last week, so about five or six hours there. Anybody else?
I was checking, thank you, checking my phone also. Last week, the Juvenile Justice Collaborative met, and we spent the better part of our hour going over and understanding the data that we, that Tom from our office has been working on. We had great dialogue and are just fine-tuning it, and the goal of that coalition is for us to work together to find any gaps in services for youth and continue to do the best that we can as a county, with state resources are also there. So it's, it's a really large group, and we're hoping to continue to move forward and make progress. I also had a museum board meeting, and that, they were thankful that the budget went through at the joint meeting, and looking forward to the van that they'll be getting for next year. It's very much needed, and will be put to good use. Was at the Conservation District meeting yesterday, and same thing, plugging along, moving forward. They have a lot of activities planned, lots of community outreach, and lots of work being done with waterways and conservation across the county. I think that's it for me. Oh, sorry, one more thing. There is that five-year transportation plan meeting this evening at the Highway Building. I think it's at 5:00 PM.
Is that for the STIP?
You know, I didn't get any direct emails about it, but it, it was on, it might've been on our upcoming calendar, too. And then the Old Courthouse Museum is hosting the Chamber Mixer this evening, so if any of you are available, it'll be a good time to take in the museum again.
Yep, Chamber Mixers are always a well-attended event, several hundred people will be there, so. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Commissioner Benega.
I'm losing my voice, so I apologize. The metro management group met last week with the city and the county representatives, talking about benefit programs for metro management, and those conversations will continue. I also had a meeting with some of the fair association people, and again, that's an ongoing conversation, so that takes time, but it's part of the process.
Did I miss a metro management meeting last week? Oh, okay, I had one for today. Do we have one today? At 3:00? Okay.
Actually, you were invited.
Okay, good, good to know. Alrighty, non-action commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I just think I wanna just provide some moral clarity in a time where we really need it. I know I don't have some of my, my biggest fans in the audience tonight, but, today, but they're my constituents as well, and I think what I owe my constituents is my judgment. So, and my judgment is that this, basically, it's easy to kinda come to public comment and take potshots and throw out ideas, but when you actually get elected to an office, and when you sit in a seat like this, to govern is to choose, and you make choices, and you take actions, and you need to be held accountable for those actions. And so when we have an auditor that just burns her credibility to get on some online shows and some 15 minutes of fame, I just don't know that I can trust what's gonna happen now in, in November. Basically, I, I think if, if she's not resigning her position, I think we have to talk about as we go into our budget, last budget session, I, I just can see the, the litigation coming and from an auditor that's not gonna follow the rules and not have the credibility to follow the rules. So I, I think basically this auditor is a walking lawsuit. So do we need to create a contingency fund and have, have some funding for the inevitable litigation that we're going to see on this matter? So that's just my kind of parting comments here, that if she's not gonna resign her position, we better be prepared for litigation against the county. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other commission discussion? Any other commission discussion? Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. We are adjourned.